Today Reverend Vin Tippett from Victory Christian Fellowship, he'll lead our invocation.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful indeed for your many blessings. We thank you for the joy and the privilege of serving. We thank you for this board and we ask the Lord that you guide them in their deliberations today. Bless our school system, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Brother Vin.
It gives me great honor to introduce my dear friend Becky Hopkins and she is with Jobs for America's Graduates and she'll be giving us a presentation.
Would it work better, could y'all hear better at the mic? Do you have, is Ed running it for you? Yeah. Could you talk from the mic? Is that okay? We just want to make sure we can record it.
We can't pay you Ed.
Can't pay you. Come on, get a deal.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we are the recipients of the grant that you guys discussed, I assume a year ago talking about this, and the grant for JAG which was the Jobs for America's Graduates. It's a national organization that focuses on seniors, in our particular situation, sometimes ninth through 12th grade. This year Putnam County Schools District wrote a grant for these. It's a collaboration between Putnam County Schools, Jobs for American Graduates, and Vocational Rehabilitation. The purpose of JAG is to build futures leaders by providing support systems to help our students to overcome barriers and replace them with successful opportunities in their future. The JAG students were handed, hand-selected to be in the programs. We have three programs going through Putnam County Schools and today we're going to brag about Interlaken High School. So, go Rams.
This is Jennifer Alonso, our president of our club.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Hello.
There are eight components of the JAG program: Academic Remediation, Career Association Club, Community Service Activities, Employment Skills, Guidance Counseling Sessions, Guest Speakers, and Field Trips, Work-Based Learning Opportunities, and others.
Go back to that slide a minute please. So, the eight components comprise our curriculum. The academic remediation is to help the students that need remediation, obviously academically. It can be done through the actual credit recovery. It can also be done through us meeting with them one-on-one, working with them with their teachers when they're behind on assignments, sometimes harassing you, is that right? To get assignments completed. A career association is a club that we had an I-N-I ceremony, which we're going to get into in a few minutes, where we actually had up to 90 people attend, which was very exciting. Mr. Bowling was our guest speaker and we appreciated him being there. And Tanya Whitehurst showed up and was such a godsend because I did give her time to prep or anything. I just gave her the students' names and said, "Would you call these out?" And she did a perfect job. But I was very proud of our students that day and I saw a glimpse of what we're really hoping to get, which is to have them all on that field in May graduating and moving on with their lives. And then Community Service, we've done a few activities. Davey, do you want to share about the community service we did right after the hurricane?
Yes, you did.
Some of the things we did after the hurricane, we went and gave out water to like the first responders and stuff like that, people in need. We pretty much asked if they needed help or like gave them water, see if they needed any like guidance or anything, just to see if they could like just get back on their feet after the hurricane because a lot of people didn't have power and stuff like that. So, we just tried to help them out and do what we could.
Great. That's wonderful.
We have a couple more community services set for this year already. We're going to do a fundraiser for Rett's Syndrome, which is dear to, I know, a lot of people in this room and of course our principal and his family. And our students are pretty excited about that and we'll talk about that more later. We're also looking forward to Diane Reeves. I've heard about that since I've been in Putnam County and I've never had a chance to experience it. So, I'm very excited about us getting to adopt a child and get to love on somebody this year. And then Employability Skills are a big part of our, component of our curriculum where we teach everything from resumes to how to, I learned some things this year which kind of shocked me. I guess it's been a long time since I've been in the classroom. We had students that had never written an email before. They had nev, they can't read cursive. They couldn't write their name in cursive. Things that just were kind of shocking. So, we're trying to go back and learn some of those skills and see if we can make them a little more progressive and ahead of the game. We also have Guidance Counselors. We've got, we have been so inundated with the district and we can't thank you enough. And also with the colleges who have been just really supportive. We've got the graduation coaches from the district level that have come in and they come twice weekly. And we've got the career specialist that comes in and she's there weekly. And our kids know them and that tells you that they are there. They're not just sitting in guidance hanging out. They're calling our students in one by one. And they often text me and say, "Did you know this student needs this done?" Or, "The student's missing this assessment. The student needs help." Or, more importantly, this week we got one that said, "Hey, so-and-so passed the reading assessment and they've got everything they need for graduation." And those are the celebrations we're looking for. And so, that's one of the things going on. Also, we have guest speakers coming in. Do y'all want to talk about the guest speaker that came? Did y'all get to attend that?
I wasn't there.
Okay. I'm sorry. They came in first period and our second period class didn't, if they could be released from class, they were allowed to. We try not to pull students unless they're able to come. And, but we had Bud come in and talked to us about, from Seminole. And we have a young man who actually is wanting to go into electricity and he's going to do an internship with him. So, we're pretty excited about that. And then our work-based learning will be what we focus on more next, in the second half of the year. And we're going to work toward putting all these students in their industries that they want to succeed in. Thank you. If you'll, next slide please. So, as y'all know, Putnam County, thank God for the Guidance Counselors, actually at Palaca High School who put this together right when school starts or possibly before school starts. So, we had students attending their first college fair. They had not ever been to one before and they just ate it up. They thoroughly enjoyed all this, the free stuff, all the information, all the people that wanted their attention. And it was a good experience for all of us. Here our students are handing out water and attempting to give water out to people. Some people are a little nervous about us offering water for free, but on the other side, we were well received by others. We have what we call, "We Are Thankful for You" Day. And we did that, of course, in November because it fits with Thanksgiving. And we run around to our custodial staff and to our administrators, to our deans, to our Guidance Counselors, and even our coaches and some of our district-level staff and just thank them for all they do for us. So, they're out handing out those to different people. I'm going to let Jennifer share a little bit about the I-N-I ceremony because she was the one who did most of the talking that day.
Hello again. The I-N-I ceremony took place at C.H. Price in the auditorium. We had Mr. Bowling and Mrs. Whitehurst to speak for us. And we pretty much introduced the program and explained what the program was about and why we're in the program. And we received certificates as well that were handed to us. And there was a lot of food as well.
That's always good.
Yeah. I think that's it.
So, they were initiated officers into, some of them for their first club ever because, which was very exciting. And the purpose of our club is obviously to do career activities and to do so, all those ten, eight components that y'all just saw. So, if you go ahead, honey. So, we had National Job Shouting Day and we had students all over Putnam County. We had somebody at Bobby Payne's office, job shouting there, the secretary. And we had Steve Larson, actually that's his family's business. And he had a chance to go back and work with them that day and as he does often. We had Dustin Rhodes working at Blue Water Bay. If you have not eaten there, it's in Melrose and it is absolutely delicious. We tried that out because we wanted to go support him. And what he's doing right there is he's actually cooking for the Gators because they actually cater to the Gators football team. And so, we're, I'm excited. I think that part I didn't expect. I would say probably one-third of our students actually have jobs and are working, some part-time to be honest, some close to full-time every week and then showing up for school every day. And I respect that a lot. And it kind of touches your heart when you know that they've got that commitment. Okay. So, here's our nice ceremony. We're going to run a little bit of this. I won't do the whole thing, but this is Desmond and this is actually his, our Career Association Creed.
I believe.
I believe.
I must choose.
I must choose.
A career appropriate.
A career appropriate.
To my interests.
To my interests.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And aptitudes.
And aptitudes.
I believe.
I believe.
The success.
The success.
Of the free enterprise system.
Of the free enterprise system.
Depends.
Depends.
On the cooperation.
On the cooperation.
Of business.
Of business.
Education.
Education.
Labor.
Labor.
Government.
Government.
Community.
Community.
And the youth of this nation.
And the youth of this nation.
I believe.
I believe.
That each individual.
That each individual.
Has the responsibility.
Has the responsibility.
To develop.
To develop.
And appreciation.
And appreciation.
For productive work.
For productive work.
And a.
And a.
Respect for all careers.
Respect for all careers.
I believe.
I believe.
Each person.
Each person.
Should have the.
Should have the.
Opportunity.
Opportunity.
To develop.
To develop.
Their full potential.
Their full potential.
And recognize.
And recognize.
Their value to society.
Their value to society.
I believe.
I believe.
My success.
My success.
Is earned.
Is earned.
Through my efforts.
Through my efforts.
At school.
At school.
And at work.
And at work.
I believe.
I believe.
The growth of my abilities.
The growth of my abilities.
And experiences.
And experiences.
Gaining through.
Gaining through.
The Career Association.
The Career Association.
Will assure.
Will assure.
My career.
My career.
Success.
Success.
I would like for all of us to welcome our keynote speaker for this evening, Mr. Thomas Bowling. It is an honor to have Mr. Bowling with us this morning. He was our first principal at Interlaken High School and we were excited about the possibility of having him return to Interlaken High School and celebrating with us.
So, as you could tell, the students got to pick who they wanted to come. And because he was their principal their first year, they were thrilled to have him come back and talk to them. He did an excellent job. They still talk about things that you said during that speech as well. Really touched.
I guess that happened.
No, you actually did a great job. All right. So, in preparation for this I-N-I ceremony, the one thing I did not share was everything that we do needs to be student-led. That's part of the agreement. It can't be adult-led. It has to be student-led. So, the students have to rise up and be future leaders, which is wonderful. We have two classes, so we had double sets of officers that we elected so we could run the program in both classes. And what you see here is us actually having committee meetings and the students reporting back about everything from decorations to fundraising to how we're going to pay for all that good food that Jennifer talked about. And also, more importantly, about who was going to be our guest speaker and what the focus would be. We've been very fortunate to have other speakers come in and are always open. So, if you have anyone that you think would be a good person in any industry to come talk to us, we'd love to have you. That's part why we want to be here today because we're always looking for somebody new to come in. We have, I look at Charlie, I remember when he was at Palaca High, it seems like yesterday. But I do have a student that wants to be a lawyer. So, I would love to connect her with somebody. And we're going to go through that too and talk about our mentorship soon. As you can see, we're on the road. We're hoping to go to First Coast Tech in November. The students are excited about that because that's a show cap and that's actually coming through Renee and the career program and all of you. And that's going to, they got to pick two things that they're going to go into. Davey, what were your choices? Do you know what you wrote down? There are all kinds of iss, I mean, it's wonderful because they have everything from auto mechanics to welding to nursing, EMTs, paramedics. So, the students will go out that day and they'll actually, and we have 81 students going from Interlaken High School. And they will pick out two subjects and they'll go into a classroom and get to experience that, which will be a nice way to see if this is really something they truly want to do. Because saying you want to weld and then experiencing that is two different things. And I'm kind of excited for them. And they are too. They asked me today when that was and when they were going. We're also looking to go to Santa Fe because on the west side, that is actually very close. And there's a couple of branches in Melrose and places where these students live. But anyway, so we've had a nice mirage of people and a lot of support from different places and we're very grateful for that. So, now we get to dreamjobbing.com. And I will tell you, as a new teacher back in the classroom after many years, I was like, "Okay, what is this and what are we doing?" And the students were the same way, weren't you? They were very hesitant. I had, we had to pull teeth a little bit, but it was one of their requirements and it was one of the best things we've done. And y'all want to talk about that a minute?
If you want.
Would you want to? They're nervous. They're shy. Yeah, what the goal is, and you're going to watch some videos in a minute, every one of them had to do a video. They had to send an email with it as well that was professional. And then they could, their own option, go put it in the social media or they could do, and then we're going to talk about some success stories. The first one we told you about was our young man getting to hook up with Bud and being able to actually do a mentorship with him. And he's hoping it's going to move into an internship. And I sure hope it does too for him as well. But each of these students have their own stories. And we're going to go through some of these. Right now, I'm going to do some of the videos. So, you're going to get to hear them as they learn how to do a video about careers. Can y'all read that at the top? Stop one minute, honey. There are eight students in my JAG class and we have 50 students who are interested in a career in the culinary arts field. They have all been involved in the culinary arts at Interlaken for multiple years. And we're looking forward, I'm actually looking forward to watching and then tasting their future goals. What excited me about that was I've known Chef Tyson a long time and I know he does a great job. And this time I got to experience it personally because I was surprised how many students truly wanted to go in that arena just because of having the hands-on experience with him.
So, I attend Interlaken High School. I'm in the class of 2018. I would love to be a chef or own my own restaurant because I've always enjoyed cooking and everything about food. I'm looking to connect with someone in the food industry. Thank you so much for your time. I'm looking forward to hearing back from you.
Can you tell she was nervous?
Hi, my name is Dustin Rhodes and I'm currently attending Interlaken High School. And my career choice would be electrician. I was wondering how to get in this field, if you know people that would connect better, whether it's better to go to a college or a trade school. Thank you for watching and I hope to hear from you soon.
We're going to just go through, I've got about five. So, I'm going to let them do the clips, Ed, if you'll just.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Alexis Baker. I'm an 18-year-old senior at Interlaken High School. My career goal is to be a RN or work in the cosmetology field. My reason behind all of that is I really like helping people. I enjoy being around people, getting to know people. And I love doing hair and makeup. So, I feel like both of those would be a great, good start for me. I would love to work with somebody in those fields so that way I can get a better understanding and pursue my goals. I hope that you like this video and get back with me soon. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jason Ahesus. I'm a student at Interlaken High School. I would like to go into the field of computer science. And I would like to connect with somebody that is a computer scientist to learn more about the field. And thank you for your time. And I look forward to hearing from somebody.
I'm a senior at Interlaken High School. I'm graduating May of 2018. And I want to be an prenatal intensive care unit nurse. And I'm looking to connect with someone who can give me more information about this so that I can pursue my dream job. Thank you for watching. And I'm looking forward to someone responding.
Hi, I'm Kate Patterson, an 18-year-old senior at Interlaken High School. I remember as a young kid watching Law Order with my mom. And I'm very good arguing because I said that I wanted to be a lawyer. I really want to connect with an attorney who can help care. Thank you for watching my video. And I hope to hear from you soon.
Today she said, "Please don't show that." And I said, "It'll be just fine. Don't worry about it." And as you can see, look at the career choices up here. We've got everything from medical, EMT, paramedics. We talked about dispatcher because when we, what was really exciting, we have a young man that wants to go into law enforcement. And when I told him, the sheriff's wife actually was based at Interlaken High School. His eyes just got huge, like, "Really?" And I said, "I think you can connect with the sheriff and actually get to know people." And they're, which they're going to do. And it was just fun to see kids meeting their dreams. And we've got a young man that's a volunteer firefighter. You heard the cosmetology. We have pastry chefs and electricians and engineers and musicians, welders. And then we have several students who are interested in working with animals. And of course, they also, they want to be vets. And we talked about the reality of being a vet and how it's harder to get into the med school. And not that they can't do it because they can do anything they set their mind out to. But there are other jobs available. So, we've got a young lady that graduated from Palaca High in 2005. And she actually worked, she went to Santa Fe and majored in zoology and went on and now is working in Shands in a lab. Has done this, has worked at the zoo and has done several things. So, we're going to connect several different professions in that so they can get an idea of that as well. So, catching our JFG students doing great things. And we are, we're starting to do some really cool things. We, what you see right there, we seem to, I think Jennifer said it best, one of my aides loves to cook. And we love her to cook, don't we? And she sure has helped us a lot. But anyway, we had a big celebration luncheon where we had 40 students that were in our credit recovery who actually had gotten through the half of credit by nine weeks instead of waiting for the whole semester. And our goal, we're really pushing them hard to get through and not just get through, but also increase that GPA while they're in there and work hard to pull it up. We're going to have, you'll hear a couple of success stories that in a few minutes. And then we did a fund, our first fundraiser was a bake sale. The young lady in front, her dad Emily actually works at Blue Water Bay. And he's the head chef in that, in that actual restaurant. And one of her personal goals is to be a pastry chef. So, she's got a connection and he made cookies for us to sell. And they were, they were quite good. And then we also had the king and the queen of Interlaken High in our class. And we, they couldn't be here today, but we sure do like having them there as well. So, we do a newsletter. I did not, I'm sorry I don't have a copy for everybody in the room, but we did have one at least for the school board. And the students, totally student-driven. The only thing I do, I think about Jane Crawford when I, when I do this because I know she'll probably find some errors or something.
No, I won't.
But let us, maybe I should just send it to you before I actually send it out and get your.
I'd be happy to edit it.
That might be smart. But with that said, what I love is the students did that. The tree was all about the young lady that put this together. She likes graphics. And I love the fact that they love to do this. And if you'll look at the last page, you'll see that we have dates to remember. So, we tried to. And today we talked about when Ms. Renner was there with the graduation coach about these, the last dates for these students to take the ACT and SAT and when it was coming up and make sure that that gets not only posted in my room, but it becomes part of their lives and they have it in their, for those that need that. So.
Would you rather say it?
She'd rather tell y'all than watch the video. And that's fine.
I stuttered most of it, so just explain the video. In ninth grade, I was elected freshman class president and I was involved in multiple sports as well. And then I got into the wrong crowd, of course, you know. And it went downhill from there. I messed up my ninth grade year, 10th grade year, and 11th grade year as well. I had about 89 absences last year, which is really bad. But I realized that it's my 12th grade year now and it's so real. And it's not long that I'll be graduating. And being and working with Ms. Hopkins has like really helped me and pushed me forward. And I was at a 1.6, I believe, GPA a couple of weeks ago. And now I am at 2.0. And I just finished my last online class as well. And, thank you. Thank you. And like being in this like program and this group like has really helped me and like explained to me and like taught me that I do want to do something with my life, you know. And education is really important to do that. So, thank you to everyone that allowed this group to happen. And thank you, Ms. Hopkins, very much. And basically, that's the video. I just didn't, I stuttered a lot. Thank you.
And then this is one of our other students.
Hello, my name is Kewone. I'm a senior IHS. I plan to graduate in May of 2018. When I was a sophomore in junior early high school career, I made four decisions. I thought I was grown and knew everything about this world. My grades and GPA suffered. I found myself with a 1.6 GPA and behind in credits. This year I got myself together and got serious about my education and got my 1.6 GPA up to a 2.02 GPA. After high school, I want to continue my education in HSPAC field. I have three years of background knowledge of this field. And I just also want to thank the JAG program for this opportunity.
So, that, that will, we just want to thank you, Putnam County, all and our school board for allowing this grant to be here. I do believe, we see proof that it's already making a difference. And the goal and prayer is it makes a difference for every student. And I'm proud of them. I'm proud of all of them. Some of them had to come a lot further than others. And it means a lot to watch what they're doing. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, Ms. Coleman. Dr. Coleman, I know that we met in the summer and I thought, "Okay, I don't know if I can do this." And then we got into it. It was a lot more involved than I originally thought, but it's so worth it. So, thank y'all again. Anything else? Davey, you want to say anything? You haven't said a word.
Becky, would you introduce your assistant principal this year with you?
I'd be honored to introduce my assistant principal. This is Joy Hugh Banks. And we are absolutely thrilled to have her at Interlaken High.
Becky, I would just like to say, I mean, I know your students already know this, but you will never have one, a person in your life more committed to you, who will love you more and push you more than Mrs. Hopkins. And I know that from experience of working with her for many years at Palaca High School. She's totally committed to whatever she does.
And Jennifer, don't forget to share your story with other students at Interlaken High. That may be ninth graders or 10th graders that you know.
Right.
Because they will know your story, but to share with them what turned you around.
Y'all can mentor them.
Join this program. Because I'm impressed with you, really.
And David Buckles, you're so quiet.
Well, I just, I've had her straighten me off so many times. I thought I'd just be really quiet. I'm just really taken away with what you're doing.
It's just, and there's one at each school, each high school?
Yes, there's one at each of the high schools. And we were actually going to present today with Crescent City, but it didn't work out for them to come. And I'm kind of glad our kids got to showcase themselves a little bit today. So, that's good.
Maybe the other two schools can come at some other time.
That'd be wonderful, yeah.
And I got a chance to be a part of Dr. Shelby's group when they were inducted. Their instructors felt.
Fairclaw.
Kelly.
Yes.
Oh, Kelly.
Yes, I was there.
Aaron's at Palaca.
It was just, just what you all are saying and doing. And they recited the creed. And I just thought it was phenomenal. And to hear you all, just, it's just a mirror of what they said. And too bad it wasn't around when he was going to.
Yes. He might have graduated on time.
It might have helped him, but just great. And you all keep up the great work.
I do want to do a little plug. Davey looked at me today because we had a lot of students out doing sports. Now, excuse me, it was cool getting out later. It's hard to get kids pulled at this time of the day. And a lot of students actually going to work. And Davey said, "Let me go run, check what time I got to be at work." And he adjusted his schedule. He's got to be there at 5:30 now to come in and be here with us. And it means a lot.
Thank you so much.
You must be a valued employee.
Joy, do you want to say something?
My name is Joy Hugh Banks. And I'm thankful to be at, this is my first year as assistant principal at Interlaken High School. And I'm just very thankful for that opportunity because as you can see, we have amazing students at Interlaken High and especially two of our seniors that are here today. And I just kind of want to, I know Ms. Crawford mentioned Becky, but I just kind of want to reiterate how much she has done just in the first quarter at getting started. She's really worked extremely hard to learn, get to know our students and get to know their needs and their wants. And she's already connected a lot of our students in the program, as she said, with some mentors, Mr. Brodsky, Mr. Hutchinson. And she's working really hard to connect our seniors with some community businesses and community members that are willing to mentor for their areas of interest. So, again, I just wanted to say, if you know someone that would like to.
She lives in Interlaken.
Yes, ma'am. So, you can contact Becky or myself. But I just wanted to really thank Becky for all of her hard work. She's done an excellent job connecting our students to help them be successful with, with their dreams and their goals. So, thank you Becky.
Thank you, Joy.
And let me thank the kids because it's all about the children at the end of the day, you know. And they're the ones, these are our, this is our future. And I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we want to thank Ed Hopkins for running the equipment.
Yeah.
And I also want to give a shout-out to Dr. Coleman, who was instrumental in writing that grant. And thank you for doing that. So, thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming.
I don't have any public comment cards, so I assume that means we don't have any. So, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Gilliard, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
Mine was taken care of by Mrs. Frantz. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Buckles?
I'm fine.
I'm good.
Ms. Jorgensen?
I'm good.
Okay. I would like to pull E4 and F4.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus E4 and F4.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We're in second.
Oh, second, sorry. Oh, second, sorry.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, E4, that's the one about Edge. Is there anybody here that can address that audit?
Is Rhonda?
She just took a break.
Okay, well then let's do the other one. F4, Turn It In. I know that, Thomas told me Tanya could address that. I just want to know, since we are approving to pay for that, how it's going? How many people are using it? What's the stance of everyone?
Okay, so we, this is a program that you actually approved for us to purchase last year through the digital classroom plan. We piloted it with some select classrooms at Palatka High, QI, Crescent City High, and Interlaken High. And it is the program, it's not just Turn It In. I know a lot of people are familiar with Turn It In, is the one that like checks for plagiarism, but there's a, a bigger piece to it than that. It's called Revision Assistant. And so when students are writing their papers, they get immediate feedback based on thousands and thousands of essays that have been graded according to rubrics that are aligned with Florida standards. So they're getting immediate feedback on that revision, which takes some of that draft piece away for teachers. So you're, you're able to get more writings done. So I know they, the schools that were using it, the classrooms that were using it last year requested it again for this year, because it was a very successful, as far as numbers, I don't have numbers for you, but I know that the teachers were really wanting it and, and that was why it was agreed to, to go again for a second year.
Sounds great.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve item F4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Rhonda, I just, um, I read that entire audit and there was a lot of it I didn't understand. So what kind of shape are we in here with Edge? Since we are their fiscal?
I marked some places on it and looking it over, they did provide a clean audit for Edge. I did notice that they had gone down in their financial, they, they now have a, at June 30th, they had a general fund net deficit of, I believe, 61,000, which they went down, I'm sorry, they have a net deficit of 98,000, so they went $36,000 more in the hole. But they have a plan in place that the auditor said looked like a viable plan going for, for to get out of that deficit. I will say that, I'm not sure what plan they put before the auditors, because they didn't include it in here. But their numbers are down over projections. So, you know, all we can do is watch it as it comes in monthly. But when they did receive a clean audit report that went to Tallahassee and they did put in the audit report that they did not see that they were a going concern, that, you know, they were a viable organization moving forward. And it says on page, on the very last page, that the school does not have a deteriorating financial condition. We'll have to go with the report from the CPA firm and it's what's been turned in to the state.
What was their FTE count? Do we know?
Uh, for that year?
You said below, no, this year.
This year?
You said it was below projection, correct?
Yes, and I'm currently still paying them at projections. I send an email every month, because we've always paid on projections up until we get the numbers from Tallahassee. After our FTE count in October, we do not get our third calc until mid-December and that's when they adjust the dollar amounts that the district as a whole receives. And that's when I'll get the finalized recalibrated FTE reports from Tallahassee and that's when I'll then start paying on that. But all along this year, every month, I send an email and say, do you want me to continue to pay at your projections, but since I see the entity counts in Skyward are lower, I can go ahead and adjust now? And I'm being told to wait till we get that final report. And what it'll amount to is that when I get that report in December and I know their true FTE numbers that DOE has recalibrated, that'll determine their total dollar amounts. I'll subtract out what I've paid them already and divide that amount by the remaining months. So their next six monthly payments, you know, after December will be much lower than their beginning. They'll get the total dollar amount earned, they just got more in the beginning and everything. But, you know, based on the audit report, they did not, they cleaned up their prior year findings, they gave them a clean audit report, so.
Well, I just remember in one of the chairman of the board's reports to us, that they had to have a certain number of students to remain viable. So I guess we'll know that in December.
From the Skyward entity counts, I think they're about 15 down over what they needed to have their best case scenario. But I can't remember right off the top of my head. I wish I had those numbers with me. I'm wanting to say, they said they needed 115 and they're at 99 or something like that, but I can get you those numbers for sure, if you'd like me to get those for you. The numbers that we currently have showing and what I'm currently giving on.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve item E4.
All in favor? Second?
Second.
I'm glad I'm about through with this, John. I'm ready to get out of here.
All right.
Did you say? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so we have no emergency items. Wonderful. Item L is discussion of unfinished business. I do not know of any unfinished business. Under new business, we have discussion input and action on insurance committee recommendation for renewal of dental insurance. Is Danny, who's doing that? I saw Danny out there. You what?
I don't miss these anymore. We went to bid with the dental insurance. Long and short of it is that instead of our rates going up 10% on the high level plan and remaining a hold on the low level plan, they're actually going down 20% on the high plan and going down 10% on the low plan by moving to United Healthcare. So the vote was unanimous from the insurance committee to move to United. Plans stay exactly the same, no plan changes. We mirrored the plans as closely as possible, which were basically identical. We have one dentist in question out of all the dentists that everyone uses in, in Putnam County and we're working with that dentist now to try to get them contracted. So we're excited about that. I got an email coming in the parking lot that they had made contact and they were reviewing the, the reimbursements and all that. So that was, that's strong. It's a much smaller number than the health insurance, but anytime I get to tell you rates are going down, it's a good time. So, uh, so I'm excited about it.
So if someone who has that one dentist and that doesn't work out, you'll let those individuals know?
I would recommend any of those individuals that want to send an email or make a phone call to that dentist, but I think the dentist understands the impact. It's a dentist that was also involved when the board of county commissioners went to bid and they were not part of another carrier's dental program. As soon as the board of county commissioners picked the other carrier, they, they made a move. So they may do that on this. I didn't make any promises to the insurance committee or anyone else, because that's up to the dentist, but I think they're at least, you know, gonna review it and we'll see where they go from there.
Crazy not to.
Right, right. So we, we should be good. I'm excited about that. We're gonna start open enrollment in, next Monday. So I'll be on the ground with the team doing face to face, as well as the website will go live at the same time.
This is the med, the health and everything?
Everything. So we'll, we'll go live Monday with the website and with us visiting schools and the bus locations and all that.
Got plenty of people to help you?
There's, I think, eight of us starting out and then we'll do cleanups, the first part of Thanksgiving week and then right behind Thanksgiving, we'll do a couple more cleanups. The last one's here on the 29th, so it's gonna be fun. But we're gonna get them knocked out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the renewal of dental insurance.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. It's time for board member reports. Ms. Jorgensen, I'll start with you.
I gave each one of the board members the legislative platform for FSBA. I went to the, I guess I'm our representative. So I went to the meeting in Gainesville. I think about 48 of the counties were represented. And we had some experts on how to present your stuff to the legislator, legislatures, and it's short and sweet. That's what they stress, short and sweet. So we got to vote on about 50 different things and the ones with the most votes came forward. But that, if you see or if you would like, anybody can do this, talk to our legislators, both on the state and the federal level about these items. The more they hear from us, the more likely they are to go along with it and the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Okay, and then, I'd like to commend Rhonda for working so hard to get us better insurance rates. I don't know if, I'm sorry, interest rates. I don't know if anybody noticed what our interest on our investments have gone up to, but it'll pay three teachers easily for a year. Yes. And it used to be nothing, because, but Rhonda did research and found the best places to put our money. And I just want to thank her for that. That's a big, that's sound money. Allocations, the format, I think you misunderstood, this came up three years ago, four years ago, and I think you misunderstood. And of course, the board has to weigh in on this. But I don't think we need to see all from June or July.
I've talked about that several times.
But we do need, what you added back then, that is excellent, is if they're adding two teachers to Interlaken Elementary, then we see what's in, in Interlaken Elementary. So I think that addition has been helpful, but I think we can get rid of all. Maybe the last two meetings could be on there or something, but not to have to do all that.
Well, and it's very confusing too.
It gets confusing, yeah.
It's a document she has on her computer and she just picks off the whole thing. I'll tell her to.
Right.
Yeah, cut back.
Yeah, cut back. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gilliard?
I'm good. I shared mine with visiting Crescent City.
Oh, okay.
I'm good.
Mr. Buckles?
Haven't had a chance to discuss this lately, but I just would at some point in the future like to go over some safety procedures and things, maybe in a workshop. And I, I'm not a workshop fan.
We know.
I know. But I'd like to know some of the latest things and ideas that Mr. Weaver has been working with the staff and, and the superintendent. I just want to make sure that we're, we're taking, you know.
Every precaution.
Every precaution and that those that are perpetrating a criminal act in school, that we're dealing with in a harsh enough manner that they get their attention.
I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Buckles. I was at expulsions this morning. We're not pressing charges for battery. I mean, we're expelling this student for battery, but charges weren't pressed and I don't know where that's coming from.
Normally that, that can be, well, that's, that's why we need a workshop. I don't, the law could change.
Was Edge involved?
I don't know. Speaking of safety, I was sharing with Mr. Weaver, I was in a ministers meeting this morning, Central Putnam Ministers Association, and our topic was people packing in the churches. And it's a sad state affairs when people that are there to hear the word have to be concerned about someone coming in. And it's a reality that this is where we are as, as a world, as a country, that, that you have to be safe. And it's sad that the pastor can no longer just preach, but he or she has to be concerned about the safety of our children, the safety of the, the members of the congregation. And, and it was so sad, but the sheriff's department did an excellent job. It was spiritual based, yet it was down to earth and what, what needs to happen and, for a meeting and you're not discussing saving. Well, you are discussing saving souls, but not that way. You, you're talking saving actually from someone like Springfield, Texas. And we don't know what motivate these people to do what they do. So it's, it's everywhere. It's in our schools, it's in the grocery store, at venues.
That's just a portion of what we need to look at, as, as well as kids.
Sharon, do we have an available time for a workshop?
Well, it, it doesn't have to be immediate.
Well, I know, but we can go ahead and get it on there for after school starts. I mean, after school starts, after Christmas or. Reorganize. Well, just let's not forget though, because I, I would like to get that down.
Nikki, you're the young one, you're responsible for remembering.
The fights at football games and things like that, where we should have students trained to break up fights. I mean, it's hard to tell a young man not to jump out there and get in it, but, you know, it's a, it's a different world and it's just things we need to make sure our punishments are tough enough that we make it where it's not worth their while to do that. So we'll, we'll figure it out. I look forward to it.
Have you got anything else?
Nikki?
I wanted to reiterate along the insurance line, the wellness committee, I was able to attend the meeting and it was great to see so many, every representative department represented it and made it clear, these are the, some initiatives, we have to change a culture, we gotta think about healthy lifestyles and insurance. So I was pleased with the meeting. I feel like it was very well received for each department in sight has somebody there that's gonna know and be educated. So that was a real positive as we, you know, try to take care of our employees the best we can. And then 9th of November, Howe Memorial at 12:45, JR of TC of Crescent City has invited everyone to attend the, their veterans, they always do such a great job. So I wanted to make sure I reiterate that on November 9th at 12:45. And the last thing, we have a workshop next Tuesday at the 14th and I appreciate that.
We're gonna, I'm talking about, we're gonna have to reschedule that.
Okay, well, when it is, I kinda gives us, I've been doing it, because it's something that's a big commitment and I, I did get a little bit of information about the FPNL and the audit and energy audit. And I feel like as board members that we're not, you know, educated in this area, but I've reached out to other counties and I didn't know if Rhonda had the ability to find out from other counties and kinda gave us, because there's always pros and cons, I've already heard a couple of things that were negative about these kind of things and then there's positives. So I just feel like with such a big commitment financially, that if you had any neighboring counties of CFOs that have this, done the energy audit with FPNL, that, that they would maybe be able to give you some feedback.
We actually talked about that yesterday. We, we do have a county we're communicating with, Indian River, I believe.
Great, yeah, and I know that.
You're a lot like us, except for money.
Yeah, and there was just things that they've already been into and they've run into that, that I thought, oh, you know, it just.
So are you gonna bring that information to the meeting? No, I'm talking to Ms. Cummings.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just things I've, I've researched, just talking to people, but, I mean, and as far as, it, it just, when I start thinking about things that are retrofitted or replaced and the amount of manpower it costs for John Chastain's department and maintenance and when you put in LED lights that don't have to be changed for seven years, are you gonna lose an employee? Like there's different things that affect, affect these kind of decisions that I just want to make sure we have all. I just hate when we make decisions like this and then we don't think about all the little people about what kind of things are gonna happen based upon making, I don't know. I don't know, it's just one of those things. I'm glad that you're delaying it just to give us a little more time, because it's a huge commitment, but I feel like it's very important for us to look at all. Right, I mean, we, we have to vote on things that we don't have a clue on and this is something that I feel like is a big commitment. And if we just listen to a presentation and it's all great and it's like, oh, okay, let's do it. And then little things that we don't even think about, because we've never done it before. That's what I'm saying. This is uncharted territory that if we as board members don't take the time to learn and ask around and get Rhonda to reach out to other districts, the, there's counties that have done it too, so it's not just a school board. There's counties, I've talked to a county person that has pros and cons to, you know, what.
What county was that?
St. John's County. So it was just a random conversation. Oh, I have this workshop and I was really excited and looking at all these great things, because I went, Dr. Searns, he brought it up at the community member, meeting, so I had a little time to digest it. But anytime I've, it's just uncharted territory, because I don't have any clue about this, never looked at it before and.
Well, and like you said Nikki, the, when we get the presentation by FPL, it's gonna be all the pros, no cons. So if we can come up ourselves with, not that we give weight to the cons, we may listen to it and say.
And it's all great, it's just a matter of if.
But I think it's a good idea.
The maintenance director has anything he's wanted to look into. I just don't want it to be after the fact. I want, if you have any concerns, if CFO has any concerns, if the, you know, I want it all brought ahead of time to where, safety, we're going to bring in a ton of people working on these projects, and there, there you go, there's safety, there are going to be tons of open gates. Have we addressed that? You know, just little things that are going to be affected in the process of such an $8.9 million job.
So you're directing John Chastain to put all this together?
No, I'm just.
Oh, come on, I always wanted to do that.
Oh, you can do that. I'm just asking for input on uncharted territory when we make big decisions like this.
Any cons, any cons anybody sees, just let us.
Yeah, we have time. If we don't, if we don't mention it now, and we go and approve it, and then it's too late, and we sign a contract, and then, oh, wait, nobody told me about.
Actually, our staff had a meeting yesterday.
Cool.
And we analyzed the documents that FPL sent us, and, believe me, we're picking this apart, item by item, because that's a lot of money. And before we launch off into that, we want to make sure we covered everything.
Right.
That's why we're doing the workshop as well.
So if you, as you find those, even before, just communicate through email to the board of any things that you feel like would be a concern, so that we, you know, because basically, that gives us a week if we had the workshop. I just don't like having a workshop and then unanswered questions, and then have to vote on it the same day, which I'm glad you set it up, but now that it's canceled, we'll have to, you know.
While we're on the topic, I don't know if you're going to bring it up, but.
Yeah, but go ahead.
But we were going to schedule that for the fourteenth. Rhonda is out of town, and I think it's important that Rhonda be in that workshop.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so we have rescheduled that, if you don't mind me saying.
No, go ahead.
For the twentieth at 10:00 AM.
Oh, good.
And that'll be the day before it comes up for a vote.
Yeah, that'll work.
And we want to give you time to process it and ask questions and do whatever we need to do.
In all fairness, and dealings over the years I've seen with FPL, they've usually, it's been positive for the district. They, we're really, they make so much money off of electric services, we're just a little spot on the screen, but it is important when it's.
But it's not just a little spot for us. The money that we have to, it's a huge commitment.
They want, they want the positive publicity with public education.
What time is the workshop?
So that's Monday, 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
That's Monday, November twentieth.
Twentieth.
That's all, thank you.
Okay. First thing I'd like to say is, the November twenty-first meeting time, we need to set that. That's usually, you know, the organizational meeting right after elections, but since we don't have anybody involved in election this year, my suggestion is to set that time at 3:30, the time of our regular meetings.
I think that's a good idea.
Y'all okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, a couple of things. Nikki mentioned she went to the South Putnam. We had a really good turnout at the Superintendent's Advisory Council for Central Putnam. Is that what we call this group, Central? More than I think we've ever had, and a lot of good input from the business leaders and all the people involved in that. They're always very positive meetings. I've been going to volleyball games and homecomings, and, you know, there's always something to keep you busy with the schools. But one of the best things I've done since we last met was to be a part of something put on by St. John's River State College, and thank goodness I don't have to pay a fine for saying that. Boys Can Too. Last March, they had Girls Can, and they had all the 10th grade girls from the three high schools come to their campus, and this time it was all the 10th grade, boys were invited. And it was amazing. They kept them busy from the time they arrived till the time they left. They fed them, and it wasn't pizza, it was a great lunch. But they had business leaders, local business leaders, most of which, most of who had graduated from Putnam County Schools. So the kids could be in small group with them, panel with them, and ask them questions about what they had to do to get to the position they're in now. And we're already talking, Ms. France and some of us are already talking about how we can get more, more boys to attend and more girls to attend, because this is such a great program. They all got a T-shirt, they all got a bag full of goodies, and they all love free stuff, so. But anyway, I think that's all I've, I've got. Our lawyer?
Everything is good in the legal department.
Well, we're so glad. Dr. Searcy?
I went to the Boys Can also. I was fortunate to be on one of those panels, had a great time, and, yeah, they asked a lot of great questions, so I hope we do it again next year. Just a couple of things. After this meeting today, I'm heading to Tallahassee, going to meet with our legislative delegation, and our NEFA superintendent's going to meet as well. But, you know, the session begins earlier this year, so actually going to go to a pre-K to twelve committee meeting tomorrow, kind of talk about, or hear about some of the topics coming up, so I'll report back to you when I hear about that. Also, at our next meeting on the twenty-first, our leadership team's going to do a presentation on kind of the state of the district, if you will. We're going to report back, what are some of the accomplishments over the last year, or some things that, some things we've done to help move the district ahead, and also going to talk about what's the vision look like for the next year. So we want to bring you up to date. Our staff is working on that. Felicia's going to be helping, helping us put together a presentation, and hopefully it'll be informative, give you a chance to ask questions. But it's real important to us to make sure that you see that we are working very hard, you know, to move this district ahead. We're very serious about that. And to go along with that, we actually had principal meetings. We met yesterday with our secondary principals, last week met with our elementary principals, and they presented to us their school improvement plans, specifically their targets on how they're going to meet those district targets. And we did have our workshop today. Jonathan Hinky did a great job presenting our strategic plan. But I just want you to know, again, this is all part of the process of moving this district each year academically. You know, our goal is to be midway in the pack as far as the other districts. That's not going to happen overnight, but we have a very clear plan on how we're going to get there. And we're holding each of those schools accountable for making sure that they move those schools to meet those targets, so.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, we do have a plan, we'll present you more about that at our next meeting. Last thing I want to point out is our administrative staff is doing a tour of all of our schools and our district offices, and it's a thankful tour. And we actually have different times where we set up and provide Coke floats for all of our employees. And it's either at lunchtime or after school, but that's been very well received. And it's just great to go out there and just, you know, hang out with the people at the schools and see what's going on. So kudos to all the staff who helped put that together, and I think.
Drinking all those Coke floats.
Yeah, we're, especially Halloween week, we really sugar them up pretty bad to go along with the candy, but they're very positive. Thank you.
Scott, I just want to say before I close, if you'll make sure the public knows about this presentation that they're going to make in our next board meeting, so they're aware of all the good work that's being done in our district, that would be great.
Yeah, we'll give you a copy, Scott.
You'll run it back by Jane, she'll tell you how to write it, too.
No, I won't.
Oh, never mind, I was just seeing.
You're pissed.
Tell me what to say.
Anybody else have anything for the good of the, just remind us we're coming back at five? Oh, yeah, so.
We have executive section.
Right, do we want to adjourn, do executive, and then if we don't get through?
That's, would be a good idea.
Public special meeting for the final public budget hearing.
Hundred million dollar budget, there they are.
Okay, opening of the meeting.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay, in accordance with Section 200.065 in Chapters 1010 and 1011 of the Florida statutes, I previously submitted the tentative balanced budget for 2017, 2018, and recommended the millage to be levied. On July 24, 2017, you approved the tentative budget and millage for advertising. On August 1, 2017, you approved the tentative millage and budgets. On September 5, 2017, you approved the final millage rate in budget and adopted a resolution of such. TRIM notified us recently that our notice of tax for school capital outlay did not reflect the correct millage in the second paragraph. It included the required local effort millage of 4.106 mils only, and should have also included the 0.748 millage for discretionary millage. We were given the opportunity to correct this by re-advertising and re-holding our hearing and recertifying compliance under sections, under Section 200.065, Paragraph 13 of the Florida statutes. The documents were all correct, that were adopted at the final budget hearing and that were transmitted to Tallahassee. The ad in the paper had the one number incorrect. Therefore, the purpose of today's public hearing is to readopt a resolution or ordinance stating the millage rate to be levied and the final budget to be readopted after the general public had a chance to see the correct notice of tax for school capital outlay in the newspaper. The items you are approving today are the exact documents that you approved on September 5.
And I'll try to make this as quick and painless as possible. As Rick mentioned, and as I emailed to you, TRIM did find the error in our newspaper ad published on July 29. In order to correct this violation, we had to notice another meeting in the paper and conduct another final hearing on the budget. By doing so, we will correct the violation and have a clean slate with TRIM. That's the truth in millage of the Florida Department of Revenue. Therefore, we are here today to present, discuss, and readopt the millage rate in the final district budgets for the 2017, 2018, and we have to do the roll call vote. But first, I am, in order to be in compliance, I need to briefly discuss the rollback rate. I gave you that handout again. The rollback rate is the millage rate that it would take to bring into the district the same amount of tax revenue as we received last year, and it's applied to the current year tax base, as you can see, at 6.5795 mils, but we are only levying 6.354 mils, so we're 0.2255 mils below the rollback rate. And so we only bring in about 96.57% of the tax revenues that we received last year. The next item, you saw it in the paper again, is our district summary budget. That's the one-page compression of our budget. It's the exact document from our September 5 budget hearing. We began the year with $6.5 million in our fund balance on July 1, and after putting everything in, we're estimating ending the year with $4.5 million. And I guess before we go to the roll call vote, I want to see if there's any questions from any of you on why we're doing this again, or anything about the budget process. Okay, so we now need to look at the adoption sheet and call for a roll call vote on each fund's millage rate and each fund's budget, and for the two resolutions determining the revenues and millage levied and the adoption of the final budget. Again, all this is the exact same rates and budgets as you approved on September 5. Again, I apologize, we're doing this again, but I don't want an infraction on our record, and this was the way they gave us to clear that up. So I'd like to charter to get you to go ahead and call for a roll call vote now.
Madam Chairperson, you were just asked to call for a motion to approve each of these, and then we'll have a second, and if anybody has any discussion, then we'll go through district by district.
Okay, so she can make the motion?
No, question by question or one motion to approve all?
Question by question.
Okay, unfortunately, but, yeah.
Would someone please make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the final required local effort millage rate of 4.106 mils.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
It's supposed to be a roll call, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
When you call for the question, I'll say District One. This is for the roll call of the approval of final required local effort millage rate of 4.106 mils. District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
Make a mo, I make a mo, okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the final discretionary millage rate of 0.748 mils.
Second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve final capital outlay millage rate of 1.5 mils.
Second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yay.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve final total millage rate of 6.354 mils, which is 3.5, 3.43% below the rollback rate.
Second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yay.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve final general fund budget of $92,423,441.66.
Yeah, second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yay.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve final debt service funds budget of $649,549.66.
Second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yay.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve final capital projects funds balance of $8,599,915.4.
Second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yay.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve final special revenue funds balance, budget of $16,193,767.32.
Second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yay.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve final internal service funds budget of $26,725,934.70.
Check, check that amount. Yeah, check. What's that amount?
Yeah, $26,725,934.
I got 338,000.
Are you looking at the thing that Sharon put together?
I'm looking at this.
I have the 725 numbered.
I have the 725.
Oh, I'm looking at this.
Oh, that doesn't even need to be a part of the.
Okay, I'll get, look at the other one.
Yeah, I got the 26.
Uh-oh.
Oh, we're right.
Oh, I'll look at this one.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, I'm glad you told me.
That's why I was laughing at you.
I'm sorry. It was bigger on that paper.
Yeah. Have that in the handouts.
Okay.
Because Sharon does it all.
Somebody's got a magazine there.
I make a motion to approve the final internal service funds budget of $26,338,348.86.
No, that's the right number. You've got.
That's the correct one.
We're looking at the wrong sheet.
She just read.
See, I was looking at this sheet. Yeah, and that's wrong, she said.
Yeah, okay.
It's on the agenda.
Second.
It's right there on the agenda.
I've got extra copies. I don't even have this in my handouts. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, y'all.
Okay.
We don't need this.
All right, I seconded it.
Right.
But.
Could we hear the number again one more time? I'm sorry.
Sure, Nikki's good at this.
I make a motion to final internal service funds budget of $26,338,348.86.
A second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two. Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve final trust and agency funds budget of $131,301.82.
Second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yay.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve final enterprise funds budget of $29,661,897.61.
Second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yay.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve total digit, district final budget of its entirety of
I second that.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
And then there's two more things, the resolutions.
Okay, the approval of resolution determining revenues and millages levied for the 2017, 2018 year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yay.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
Make motion that we approve the resolution adopting the district summary budget for 2017, 2018.
Second.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
And I verified that the amounts that you're reading off, off of Sharon is what was in the paper. That's correct.
Okay, good. That made me nervous for a minute.
Meeting is adjourned.